To call to order the select board meeting at 7:03 and we have present. I just. Mike Tool, Steve Hornsby, Kevin Snyder, and myself, Meg Arts are present. I'd like to start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have no appointments or retirements?
Wow.
Last couple of weeks have been insane. Okay, great, all right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 24th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, you're approved. All right, Kevin, I'd like you to do the licenses and permits.
Okay. Should I do all these at once? Just run through them all at once?
I think you have to read each of them because we have to vote on them.
Each of them individually, okay. All right, so the first one is to vote to approve the one day beer and wine liquor license to Robert Matus and Heidi Matus for a private event at 98A Burt Street, Norton, Massachusetts from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 1st, 2022.
Is there any questions? Or is there a motion to approve?
Soon yet.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
All right. The second one is a vote to approve the special events application of Frank Durant on behalf of Parks and Recreation for the 29th Annual Charlie Halloween Parade scheduled from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 30th, 2022.
So moved.
I enthusiastically second.
Enthusiastically, so moved.
I guess we have to take actually a roll call, right? Because not everyone's here.
Yeah, she's not virtual, as long as she's not virtual.
She's not virtual, okay, then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we have a Halloween parade.
All right, and the last one is a vote to ratify the approval of the one day beer and wine liquor license to Elias de Silva for a private event at 185 North Washington Street, Norton, Massachusetts from 12:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on Sunday, September 4th, 2022.
And just that, as you all know, that they, this came in after our last meeting and that's why we had to reaffirm the approval now. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Madam Chair, just to point out, that is not a common procedure. I know that Chen Reed, our secretary, or administrator, I should say, spoke to him and said this is an outlier situation.
Yeah, she reached out to them and talked to them about it and they're not gonna, that won't happen again.
Yeah, perfect.
Sometimes you get so familiar with the process, you forget. Okay.
Actually, before Madam Chair, Mike, just, and I know it's probably none of our risk, but do we require any liability insurance for one day liquor licenses or anything like that?
No.
That's all on them?
Yeah.
All right, announcements. This came from the Norton Kayak Company. So I take it they're running this, correct? So it's the 2022 Norton Reservoir Cleanup Day on Saturday, September 10th, at 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And if anyone wants to sign up in advance to let him know, then that way he can, he's providing lunch for all the volunteers. Any questions on that?
Yep, Madam Chair?
Yep.
So I have the flyer here, just to mention that it's sponsored by the Norton Kayak Company and the Wounded Warrior Project.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And trash bags will be provided, like you said, lunch will be served, and it's for, it's for anyone who wants to come and volunteer.
Great.
Just that one other announcement, just to remind people, on the 13th, the EPA will be holding a webinar. So on the issue that we talked about at the previous meeting, on ethylene oxide from the company in Taunton Industrial Park that cleans medical devices, and if anyone wants to join that.
We had a call today with the EPA representatives, just to kind of outline how they're gonna do the, how the outreach happened to let people notify people, and now they're gonna, this is gonna be the actual meeting and they'll be, you know, obviously available for help answering fielding questions afterwards.
So, I'm gonna try to add one more item. Yeah, the Norton VFW, I know I announced this a couple of weeks back, the 75th Anniversary Celebration is Saturday as well.
The 10th?
Yeah, the 10th, from 12 to 5. There's gonna be music, there's gonna be food, 50/50 raffle, and a pie eating contest, so. Parking is in the back of the Yale School and there's gonna be shuttle service to the VFW.
Great. It's gonna be challenging, there's a lot going on that day.
There's quite a bit going on, but this looks fantastic.
Yeah. Excellent. All right, let's get into the new business. You're up, Natasha. We're gonna have an ad hoc.
You can sit, shall I just sit over here?
Yeah.
It's that next to me.
Oh, I'm stuck. Okay, just an update on the election. The early voting in person, we had a total of 74 live early votings, and just so you know, the cost, it costs the town $900 for those 74 voters to vote.
You love saying that statistic.
Wait, was the early voting before?
This is the live early voting.
The live?
The live early voting. Now, the mail, early voting, vote by mail, we had a total of 2,096 that we mailed out and we got back 1,460. 1,050 people voted at the polls yesterday, and absentee ballots were 48, total of 48 absentee ballots. So, that's that.
Is that lower than usual for a primary?
No, it's about the same, it's about the same. What they're gonna do for the, where there was only, only, where there were 2,096 mailed and that we received back about 1,460 of the postcards that you received, the state is going to again mail out postcards for the November election to all those who didn't send a postcard back. So those will be going out, so I think we're gonna, we'll face a busy election, I'm sure, in November. Also, I need approved from the select board, the hours for the early voting, the live early voting for the November election. That's gonna run for two weeks, and the first week is 19 hours. And I would like to, again, do that, what we just did, do the 8 to 2 on Saturday, 8 to 3 Monday through Wednesday, the Thursday, the 2 to 6, I believe we did, and the Friday 8 to 12. The second week, we have to do as many hours as town hall is open, we don't have to do the exact hour, so I'm gonna, I would like to take it, instead of 8:30 to 4:30, go 8 to 4. And that gives us a little extra time to get the ballots into the system and that. So if I could get that approved by your people, the state is requiring the select board to approve the hours.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the early voting hours for the November general election as proposed by the Madam Town Clerk.
I'll second, but I just had a quick question. Just, I know you've said this before, but the cost is, it's mandated by the state, so there's really nothing we can do about the cost.
No, there's nothing we can do about the cost, they'll be sending out, we will get a reimbursement, a small reimbursement from the early voting, we might get back $1,000, you know, but it's better than nothing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
But it does, it's costly, let alone the postage too, the postage is extremely high because we have to pay to mail those ballots out, so. And I would like to, I feel like I need to hold up an Oscar. I wanna, I just wanna make comment, I really wanna thank the election workers, they are fantastic, they're hardworking, they're dedicated, and I'd be lost without them, I really would. I wanna also thank the fire department for letting me hold the live early voting on the bay garage there on the side of the building, it was extremely helpful and it's great for me also being close by because our computers are right there in the office and there's a lot of work involved, and they were fantastic helping. And I wanna thank the police department for the details, they are always fantastic and always checking up, do you need anything, can we do anything? And they help us bring everything back. And I really wanna thank the highway department because these guys take all the equipment down there and then the day after the election, they go and collect it and bring it all back, and that's, that's a lot of equipment, I mean, the guys, yeah. Still for the help, it's fantastic. So everybody's great.
You know, I wanna thank the town manager for staying out of your way.
Thank you very much for the town manager. I've never heard a worse. I know, I know, there was other issues around, you know, being first day of school, which I wasn't thrilled about because I am a middle schooler, but, I don't know, maybe I left really early, but I was shocked, it was, it was the easiest drop off I've ever done.
You made comment about that, but there were a lot of complaints about.
Yeah, so I must have, I must have just gotten ahead of it.
Yeah, you probably did, yeah.
So one, Madam Clerk and I joked, because she does the magic inside, and Ray Cord Scrub manages the traffic outside.
That's correct.
And yesterday was a hectic day, and just so the board knows, I made my failings known to our legislative group, and they were really in a hard place. That was the last day that they could do it, to certify the elections for the state, they were gonna try to bump it back a week to the 12, they just couldn't do it, and so, but it did really, your group and Ray's group and the schools all jumped through hoops to make, make it all happen, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
We have to finish voting, we didn't vote on it.
I seconded.
You seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, so you have your, your early voting.
I just, I just made copies, I don't know if anybody's interested, but I have the official tallies here, I just, if you wanna pass them out, those are all the official results right there.
These are not clean up from the ones that I was scratching down.
We don't do paper anymore.
Oh, you don't do paper?
No, no. I love the paper.
Yeah.
If you could improve, Madam Chair, through you?
Yes.
If you could prove any, improve anything on the processes, or something that you could share that you would improve or anything, I know you've kind of got this down to a science, so.
No, I think everything is great. Like I said, I get so much support and my health is fantastic, it just makes my life much easier. And, no, I think, I think all is good, I, there's nothing, if you could take away live early voting, I'd be happy, but. But no, but thank you, thank you for your concerns.
Excellent. Any other, any more questions? No, again, we really appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I promise, but tonight I will make sure that gets up.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, so weights and measures, I don't know if you know what that is, it's, they go out and they check to make sure our scales and gasoline pumps are all calibrated correctly, and we have contracted with the state, it's a great deal, $2,500 a year for this service. Matter of fact, someone today sent an email, one of the town administrators, saying, does anyone have a description for a weights and measures person? And I just said, well, we contract with the state, and they said, I didn't even know that was an option, so. It's a great service, and they did say that we can actually charge a fee to the establishments to cover the $2,500. So later on, I'll come back, they said they're gonna send me a list of all the establishments that they go out to and.
So it's businesses, not residential?
And it's gas, food, gas with food, grocery meaning.
Yeah. Anyone that would sell anything by, by weight or.
Or measure.
Yeah. So when they get me the information, I'll come back and we can look at it possibly.
And we, Norton's never charged a fee for this?
No. No. I mean, I'm not lucky to make money on it, but at least cover the cost.
Yeah.
We charge for everything, I'm shocked.
Not what we charge for. All right, we had a lively conversation this afternoon with Mansfield.
So maybe just give the overview of what the purpose was.
Well, yeah, so, I'm gonna let, Mike give the overview, I mean, my, my personal opinion about the meeting was, I don't feel like it moved anywhere, I think it was, this is what we do, take it or leave it kind of thing. And I kept saying, well, but, we need another option, you know, there are incident, you know, I get it, like, you can't, you know, they were talking about, you know, it depends on the clientele, depends on, you know, certain groups are gonna have, you know, lots of people in their vehicles, so less cars coming in, certain groups that are gonna have singles coming in and.
So a bunch of double talk.
Yeah, so, and that was mostly, and Mike can speak to it, mostly from the acting police chief, so, but the select board chair and town manager were, you know, willing to talk if we have, you know, as we go forward, if there's more issues, that they're willing to work this through.
Was, Madam Chair, was, was our chief, was Chief Clark there as well?
No. So, we were under the impression that it was just gonna be the chairs of the two select boards and the two town managers, so I didn't even know that.
It was the entire boards and it was the.
No, no, but it was the, he dominated the meeting, the acting.
I didn't know that acting chief was gonna be there.
Because otherwise, we would have had Brian there and that would have definitely changed this conversation.
So it was Meg and I and the chair of the board in Mansfield, the assistant town manager and the acting police chief. And the main focus, you know, why we said we were there was because of what happened with the Kid Rock concert and the gridlock. And so the deputy chief just went over some of the measures they've been taking.
Basically, so it was unavoidable, unavoidable.
For the fifth year, it's always unavoidable. But, so Madam Chair, I think it's at this point, it's, I think we have to, on our side, my recommendation would be to, if the board, with the board pleasing, that we put down what we want. Even if it's not feasible, let's just put down what we want in this, and then at that point, have Chief Clark, when you, when you and yourself and Mike go back to meet, you with Chief Clark, you say, you know, this, you think it's unavoidable, but this is what we're asking for. Because when Chief, it is very alarming to me that Chief Clark, 24 hours in advance, said, open the, open the parking at 4 o'clock, and they chose not to. When a safety officer says, usually that request should not be denied.
Their response was more, you know, the earlier you open the parks, the more chaos and drinking and stuff that goes on in the park, so, yeah, they had every, every thing they could talk about.
And we, we are, we as representatives of town have to listen to our appointed officials, and if they believe the safety is there, I'm gonna bite tooth and nail to make sure.
Well, not for nothing, but the town of Norton is mostly affected by this traffic concerns, and mostly affected by the noise and the safety concerns, it's like, and I said, I said, I am living, I'm right on Reservoir Street, so I can't go down after 9:30 on the concert night, which is a pain in the ass. I said, so I'm not even speaking on behalf of myself, but, you know, we had the Chinese restaurant, Jasmine, that couldn't, you know, couldn't get their delivery drivers there, and that's horrible, so, yeah, no, we're gonna have to circle back with them on that.
Mr. Town Manager, is the entire property, is that entire property, I know the stadium itself is in Mansfield, is the back of that property in Norton, is there any bit of it in Norton? None?
And do we get any, what do we get?
Nothing.
Nothing? And do they pay for any of the detail?
Not only do we get nothing, we had to pay to have graduation there this year.
Well, that's even worse.
With due respect, they have donated before, but it was 20, they lost $20 million in the last year.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, but I understood, that was this, but I'm still very, very concerned, like, if our safety office, I mean, Sean couldn't get fire trucks down.
Couldn't get fire trucks out.
Could get fire trucks down, down 123.
Couldn't get them out of the fire station, so. All right, so let's go from a different angle, that clearly, I wish that it was just us and not, because they seem very cooperative. It was the.
So, I don't know, if you wanna get some ideas, and I'll get ideas from the two chiefs and put a letter together that you can sign, bring back to the board, and you can sign and send.
Because it's not just traffic, I mean, it's just, it's a massive headache for, you know, our resources.
Madam Chair, Mike, during concerts or, what is the chief's role, authority, I should say, on any of the highways? Does he have full authority, any of the highways during concerts or any time during that time, or is he, is he limited in his controls in any way during, at any time?
The Mansfield chief?
No, our chief.
He has control only on the streets in Norton.
In Norton, right. So if he deemed to shut a street down, or a highway portion down, he could do that?
As long as it's not a state road.
No, that, no, he's saying.
No, I think, I think the issue is, so 140 is a state, right, so you can't really, can't really do it.
That's, that's my, that's my question, is, how do you, how do we get authority during special events? Do we, is there a way that we can request from the state during expedity times that Chief Clark is the person responsible for those roads?
I'd have to check.
I don't know to reach.
I don't know if they'd do that, but I'd have to check with the chief and see, because I know that's one of the things Mansfield always throws out there, about Reservoir Street, though it's not us that require Reservoir Street to be closed, that's state.
That's what he said. I said, I literally almost abandoned my car that day, I could not get to my house from work.
This is what, this is what, it doesn't look, these are state roads, and there's an estate, anyone from the state manning these roads. Where Foxborough, you have one person, we, my family owns parking lots over there, they had one person that was in charge, and then all the people would call that one person if something went wrong.
Well, we have a state Massachusetts state trooper on Reservoir Street, so I can tell him to get up there.
No, no, but that's, but he's not on the detail for the, for the traffic, so, is something else?
No, no, I get that, but I'm just saying, we have enough pull, we have enough people that are connected, that this is, should not be where it's at.
I think one other ask should be that a representative from the board be present during the planning for next season.
Yeah.
A seat at the table, at least.
When they meet with the state to go over what the plan is gonna be out on the roads.
So we only have, how many more concerts? What did you say, eight?
Eight.
So.
And dispatch, do you, do you know if dispatch is, are they talking dispatch, the regional dispatch during these times?
Yeah.
Everything should be coming out of there, in my personal opinion.
Because I talked about, I said, why aren't we, you know, can't we provide the businesses, at least locally or the surrounding community, with someone to call? I said, well, you just can call Xfinity Center. I said, really? You think they're gonna be really helpful? And they're super helpful, I'm like.
Thank you for calling the Xfinity Center, for one.
Okay, I'm gonna call the customers, that is the customer service center.
Our normal business hours are.
Yeah.
Thank you for calling Live Nation.
One of the things I was mentioning was that, you know, we've been asking for a long time for Xfinity, just put a sign, a message board out front that warns people what concerts coming up, I mean, and I know I brought that up, and he said, well, that state highway, then after gets, well, we'll redo the plan next year, won't we? A requirement.
That's crazy to me that we haven't had a seat at that table discussions, because.
It's crazy that we're not getting more detailed feedback from Xfinity. That, to me, is appalling. I mean, just because it's the town doesn't, we are the ones that are affected, so, yes, Peter?
Yes, I was, I was, I was waiting at the select board meeting on August 24th, and I saw the traffic go down East Main Street on 123 on August 24th concert, and two days later, for the August 26th concert, I was going home to find my place from Taunton, and I get stuck in that traffic for one hour.
Yeah, I'm with you, Peter, I was stuck too, it's not happy. All right, so why don't we do this? We're gonna put together sort of our wish list, we'll sort of have everyone review it, we'll send a letter, the number one thing should be, we need a seat at the table next year when they start this planning for next season's concerts. I definitely wanna include, and you'll have a conversation with Brian and Sean about, you know, where, and I don't know, I don't know who we can even have the conversation with about, why aren't we getting some help from?
Well, they pay for our details.
They do pay for the detail, all right.
But other than that.
But then we should be having more detail, if we're having issues, so, they can pay more.
Put a detail in front of the fire.
Yeah.
Because ultimately, this is.
Up and down off of 495, so.
Well, just coming here, I mean, I live about half a mile, and it took me, what, 20 minutes to get here?
That is one of the fire chief's concerns, is they do block the front, it's not, people aren't smart enough to not block that, Brian.
Yeah, if they're paying for the details, we should maybe have a detail there, I mean, that's.
This is just a time bomb, it's just a time bomb, that one of these years, it's gonna, we're not gonna be able to get to someone to rescue them, and that's, that's gonna be tragic.
So let's make sure this doesn't happen next year, at all.
All right, so we'll work with them, and then we'll put something together, all of us will review it, we'll send a letter to their select board.
Thank you for, thanks for pushing that, Peter.
All right. Next, reviewing or discuss petition to restrict vehicle traffic on Hill Street to light delivery vehicles.
So, a petition was submitted, I think you've got a copy of it, you know, once the Traffic Safety Committee becomes established fully, we'll get that to them, with a concern from the residents on Hill Street of trucks on Hill Street. And I did have my MFN meeting last night and asked them once again to hand out the flyers to the truckers that come into the sewerage treatment plant, I noticed their pictures of sewerage hauler, I don't know whether that came downhill street or how that came, but it's going into the treatment center facility, so they said they will hand out flyers on their, at their center to try and restrict the trucks and remind them they have to go through the industrial park.
I hate to ask the question, Madam Chair, I'm assuming Keith Silva's team's got more signs over there than, already, I mean, I hate to even mention the word sign, he's got more signs than I've ever seen, is there signs that say no commercial?
I've been downhill, I don't think there are.
Yeah, I don't know, we can't, it goes between two cities.
Right.
So to restrict it, we have to get agreement from Taunton too.
Because Mansfield Boulevard is really the only way that you really should be using to get to those.
Right. I mean, there is another big lot down there that's owned industrially, so some, the lower end of it, you would always need to have.
We got waste management down there.
Waste management, we have.
The treatment facility.
Treatment facility, and then right next to that, there's a vacant industrial lot, so there could be another developed, building developed down there, but the other end of it, it's all residential except for the two solar farms. I mean, we put the signs out, even though they're enforceable too, but we put them out there to try and keep people from going down there, and I'll check on Hill Street, see if he's got a sign there.
All right, I'll give you the articles.
Sure. So I think today you were sent a draft warrant, I'll just review that with you, that articles that were, have for the warrant. So the first one is for any unpaid bills from last year, last fiscal year, these first few are standard articles. The article two would be to cover any separation expenses. Article three is to supplement budgets for this current fiscal year. Article four is to appropriate funds to supplement the water enterprise, and five is the sewer enterprise. Article six is to raise and appropriate funds for capital improvement. Article six is to raise and appropriate funds for capital improvement, to add, be added to the capital improvements fund, and seven, article seven is amendments to the capital improvement plan. Article eight, so this article was voted at a meeting on May 9, 2016, and it authorized $34,800 to expand the Council on Aging Parking Law on West Main Street, and it hasn't been used, and what the Council on Aging now is looking to take these funds and put them towards the project for the new Council on Aging, so they can increase the size of the parking lot. You know, they've been doing a lot of value engineering on the project because of inflation, trying to get it down to a reasonable. We haven't gone out to bid, probably, in October they'll be going out to bid, but would their, what the estimators have said, they're trying to keep costs down. And article nine also submitted by the Council on Aging. So in the article that was voted at town meeting previously for the Town Hall, the Senior Center, and the Athletic Complex, it said that any gifts shall be used to defray the borrowing costs, and, you know, one, one of the big items that has been coming up with the Council on Aging building has been the kitchen, and different items they'd like to have in the kitchen, but because of the value engineering, they haven't been able, they've had to cut back on those things. But they, they do have current people that are willing to pay for those items and donate money towards that, and so this would change the wording of that article so that gifts could be used to purchase additional things, not to defray the costs.
So this is supply, I'm sorry, you want to wait until questions go through, finish going through, and then we'll show up with questions or?
No, go through me as we do them, otherwise.
Okay, oh, then I have a couple. All right, let's start with just that last one. Mike, does that include, does that include all three projects? Does that, does that clause apply to all three?
It does.
It does. Was it ever brought up rental fees or anything going back to the projects themselves?
I don't, it, it was brought up about rental fees, but I don't think that was talked about as going to defray.
Costs, it was going to go into some kind of endowment, with maintenance, yeah, permanent maintenance ongoing.
Yep.
But it wasn't going to, they were going to plan to charge just to get, to pay for what they're doing. They're figuring they're either going to fundraise for it, or it's got to come out of the, or they have to make adjustments to the actual plans themselves.
So as we get further along, and say like the Senior Center, they'll have to sit down and think about costs to rent it out for certain things, and those fees would be used to help defray some of their expenses, but not the cost to the construction.
And I guess my thought process is not necessarily the Senior Center, right? It is, I mean, we had an ability to see the tour of the new athletic facilities, they're super impressive.
They're, they're.
They're going to be in demand for rental.
But again, that, that's going to, that's going to help keep the maintenance for them. You know, they're going to have, and think about, if you're going to have all these tournaments going on and all that, there's going to be maintenance fees and cleanup and all that, so that's going to be covering those, those costs.
I just worry, Madam Chair, I just worry that, I've, I've watched the last two Capitol, Capitol meetings, these projects are, I'm truly worried that they're not even going to get to the shovel point, because they are ballooning out of control. From, from what I'm watching, and maybe I just need more understanding from them, and maybe we invite them in, I think they'll do in very soon, it seems like they just keep cutting the project to the project's shell of what people, you know, from a wood town hall to different, different structures, that the engineers say is fine, but that's not what the original vote is, that's.
A lot of these costs, though, are the whole supply chain issues. So some of it, and it's, a lot of it is waiting to purchase some of this stuff, and because we've been waiting, costs are just escalating. So we're in a, sort of a bind where some of the things, they have to just start moving on, and they're going to have to find other ways to, to cut corners. I mean, that's like the whole parking issue at the Senior Center, like literally going to get it, sort of the grading right for the land, but they're not going to surface it because they just don't have the funds to do it. But they're anticipating, I, I was actually impressed with, at least what I saw for the Senior Center, where they're thinking ahead, going, okay, we can't do this now, how are we going to prep so when we do have the funding available, we can in the future?
No, no, and I'm pulling, I'm pulling the kitchen very closely, right? To a point where, I mean, if this article passes, I can tell you, I'd like to bring up to discussion regarding the gift to Town Hall, and maybe being reallocated, naming gifts for some, something within Town Hall that may be renamed over to the Senior Center. But that's, that's what the conference was right now.
Other questions?
Oh yeah, I'm not even just a full of delightful at what wall.
Did you have something else?
No.
Okay, I thought there was another.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess it's another article.
That was nine. Article 10, if I need help from legal, I just walked in at the right time. Article 10, this is an article to appropriate $28,560. This is for our share of the cost for the cleanup of the Spac site. So they were originally looking for $42,000, and our attorney, Mark Rich, worked on negotiating to get that lowered down to the $28,560, and it represents 2% of the $1,428,000 that the Army Corps spent cleaning up the Spac site. Any questions on that?
Is this going to be a one-time, is this going to be a one-time expense?
Article 11, just if we have any amendments to the personnel bylaws. Article 12 is a petition article that was submitted for the creation of a finance pointing committee, and it would require a charter change and a bylaw change, and that was submitted by petition, Mark Sweeney. Article 13 is also a petition article submitted by Randy Fogarty, looking to allow large-scale ground-mounted solar in our 40 zoning, residential 40 zoning districts. Then article 14, usually in the fall town meeting, this is where we appropriate money to go into the OPEB trust fund for other post-employment benefits liability. And article 15 would be to put money in the stabilization.
Madam Chair, I might jump back on you, Mike. Separation expenses, we still have the current deputy, the deputy chief that just left, and then the old chief, right? Is that the only two separation expenses coming up?
That I know of right now, yeah.
Okay. And.
They may have one other firefighter they're thinking in the fire department, too. Other than that, that's all I know.
Departments submitting anything for operating budget amendments? Obviously, police and fire always do because of overtime setbacks. Any other departments that are?
Right now, I know I have police and fire looking for the overtime, some restoration on the overtime that was reduced from their request that they submitted for the Maytown meeting, and I know the schools are looking for around $700,000 in supplemental for transportation and special ed costs. I know they're, I think they're voting on that tomorrow night, and, you know, some other small amounts from some of the other departments, but I haven't gotten everything yet.
Just, Madam Chair, through you, just to correct me if I'm wrong, fall meeting is, fall meeting on the budget side is usually supposed to be for variable expenses, not fixed expenses, if I'm, if I'm brass tacking it here, right? Because the fixed expenses, you get added on for the next fiscal year, we just get added on top of that. Where variable expenses are one-time, kind of close, close that out, is that, is that understanding correct, or for the most part? That's how the history of it?
Yeah, the history has been that we wait and see what our free cash certification is, and some of the larger budgets, when we have town meeting in the spring, we tell them, Mark, we can't, we can't afford what you're proposing, and when we have free cash certified, maybe we can add something back to it. I know that we're about to be, we're about to go out to borrow, so we'll be looking at some added money needed in that area, too. $12 billion for the train project will be going out, I think for permanent this time.
And one last question, Madam Chair. Free, actually, two questions. Free cash, is that what percentage does the chair vote? Have you figured it out yet, or no?
What it's going to be?
Yeah.
No, I don't know, approximately it could be around 3 million. Usually what we strive for is we want to have free cash in the range of 5% to 10% of the budget.
And I always love to hear how much is open.
Oh, God. I, I, I'm not sure, I, I think, I think the last time I said to James, where is it? Like 51 million? And he's like, no, it's more like 100 million, so I'll, I'll get that from him, and I'll let you know.
And is that, is OPEB part of, and I don't think we have a prudent investor discussion, or no? Is that, I thought OPEB was part of the prudent investor discussion on the financing of that, or no?
I'm not sure on that, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I think we are, I would like to make a motion, is that correct, to enter into executive session? Or no, I think we make a motion to end. I want to make a motion to.
You have, let me find it.
I have, I have that.
My number, yep.
So, all right, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to GL C 30A 21A 3 to discuss with Town Council strategy with respect to the following pending collective bargaining or litigation matters where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, or litigating position of the public party.
Move that the board go into executive session under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, for the purposes and reasons declared by the chair, and that the board cannot return to.
To return.
To return.
To, oh, to return to open session thereafter.
No.
That makes sense.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ike?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Kevin?
Yes.
Christine?
Aye.
And I, too, am I, yes.
How much time do you think, ballpark?
15, 14.
As it's reading.
All right, so we're on number six on the adjourned designated capital improvements committee representative.
So by September 15th, each year you're supposed to appoint someone from your committee to the capital improvement committee, so.
It's been Christine, right?
It has. And I was very bad last time, and I didn't show up to half the meeting because I had very busy Mondays in the spring.
I know, that's the problem.
March is a very busy month for birthdays, and they were all on Mondays. So I couldn't do it then. Is it still Mondays?
Mondays are Wednesdays.
Mondays are Wednesdays, okay. Do we have any other volunteers? It sounds like Christine would be willing to give it up. There you go.
I have EDC on Wednesdays, so that would be tough.
So that's a valid.
Cause there are conflict.
Christine, do you want to do it together? Is there a way to do it together, or is it?
That's a good call.
That Christine and I basically, yeah, we'll do like, you know, and then you and I just touch base on this?
When are the, it, it's usually three or four?
Yeah, usually.
October.
Yeah, three, three, four at the most.
Three or four at the most, okay.
And we'll be starting.
By the way, that was Mike's way of saying no. That was the sweetest way of saying no, but it was, it wasn't no.
It's gotta be, why can't we?
I would volunteer if it was any other day. I usually put all my work in Tuesday.
What time, on Mondays?
We have before FinCom, so six o'clock.
I don't even get any time. Can it be done remotely?
Probably will be this year, because I know Finance Committee is.
Finance Committee's remaining remote.
So if it's before, don't do it.
If I can do it in the car, I just.
You almost had me.
Oh, do you want to see the schedule? Uh-uh. Because if it's already before October, I'm gone two Mondays in October, so I can't even assist them.
I'll be glad I volunteered, I mean, I have no problem.
Okay, but what's, what's, what's the rule?
But I don't want to.
Why can't I have multiple? Why don't we just have a select board representative, and then we can actually?
Yeah.
It's going to be designated.
One member of the select board.
Only one will attend.
I have no problem working with Christine, and we kind of go back and forth, and she wants to be lead, and I'll be the alternate, whatever it is.
So I have three Mondays available from now until the, it's a 15. No, I'm so sorry.
So Mondays or Wednesdays?
Well, Wednesdays, we, it depends.
I'm fine doing it this, this round. You, you've got me, Mondays apparently are free.
Get you out.
If you want me to, you have to vote for me.
Yes, you can vote.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christine LeVoe to the capital improvements committee.
I'll second, but I want to hear your campaign pitch for it.
Only you want me.
I have a letter in the mail.
I have these three days available, please vote, oh, that's my pitch.
I'll have to hold it there.
All right, you got my vote.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Christine.
Thanks, man.
Another committee. All right, referral of petitioning zoning article to Planning Board for non-binding recommendation.
Yep, so there's an article, the article looking to allow large-scale solar on lots in the residential 40 district, so I'm asking that you refer that article to the Planning Board for their non-binding recommendation.
Comments, I guess, first.
That was almost a motion.
I was like, it was like a motion, then I pulled back a motion.
Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion, and then there can be discussion.
Yes.
So I'll, I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Or discussion.
Or discussion?
No, no, I'm just going to pull back and everything, and just go to the vote.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No. No, sorry.
You were just stating that, no.
Sorry, I don't know why it's.
All right.
This is what happens when you go after.
Jen, do you get that? Make sure Jen's clear on that.
No.
You want to know?
All right, the award of the gravestone, which is Conservation and Repair Project Contract, which my understanding was, wasn't there only one?
There were two.
So there were two, okay.
So there were two companies that submitted, and the low bidder, the price was $74,365, and that's from Gravestone Services of New England, and we had one other, Village Green Restoration Incorporated, that bid $140,460.
It was so worldly different, it sounds like, oh.
So, and I guess they know each other from the bid opening. Anyways, I recommend that the board vote to award the contract to Gravestone Services of New England.
So moved. Second, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Gravestone. And that comes out of the Hicks, right?
Right.
I'm still fairly responsible. Discussion on budget priorities for fiscal year 2024.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I asked this to me on there, and the reason being is, obviously, we have strategic planning coming up, but I see them, I see them a little different. Obviously, strategic planning is longer term and so forth, where we, we're about to do a budget, and one of the things that's been a constant request from us is setting priorities from the FinCom, they've asked us to do that and so forth, and I'm not sure if we'll get to that point, but, you know, for me, I look at it and say, council of aging, recreation, there are certain departments that truly, if you look back over the last 10 years, have not gotten any substantial increases, and I understand the budgets are tight, and. And I understand the budget's tight and so forth, but sooner or later, we as a board, and in my opinion, have to kind of say, we're going to invest this for our town, right? And we know the council of aging represents 17% of the population in town. The schools represent the same thing. It's apples to oranges to compare their budgets. However, it's, it, it does say something, 33 million versus 150,000. So I, I'm not sure if you would like, if you guys want to take this up, maybe we, we kick it to the next meeting because Mike's going to start working on the budget soon for next year.
January.
When I said Mike's, I didn't, by the way, if anyone believes he's working, waiting till January to work on the budget, I'm going to call. Sorry. I, I just, I really would like us to really, as a group, say, before Mike gets to that point, say, these are the things that as a group we would like to.
I think what would be helpful and then this will feed into strategic planning when we get there, but again, going to your earlier point on the scheduling of the budget process and when these things are happening, so we kind of know, we can make sure that they're part of agendas or involving other folks.
So we're not playing catch-up on you.
Yes. If we could only talk outside of the meeting, we wouldn't have.
We could just have longer meetings and talk more.
All right, so do you want to kind of lay out this fiscal year and what are the key, what are the timelines that we need to be?
Actually, we, this, is that still part of this budget priorities, right?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So do you want to lay out your timeline?
I will, I'll get that to you.
Okay, now, you're going to want to just walk us through sort of the overall.
I can give you, you know, a ballpark. As I said, we rarely, in December, once we, the, the December ends, we have a department head meeting and request that all the departments work on their budgets and submit their budgets. So the process really does start full tilt in January and I'm not sure of the exact timelines on when I have to, I have to do, I think the school committee gives me their final budget eight weeks before town meeting and then my final budget is six weeks before town meeting.
And then this is where the department heads, you know, maybe to your point, do we want to have, you know, look at our, our agendas for January and see if we can invite three of the department heads to come and we can hear the presentations or somehow?
Well, I, I think, you know, that's why I brought it up when the representative was here from Foxborough, that they don't get into that portion of things. Like he said, if they want, they can attend finance committee meetings because every time you have a department head person come to a meeting, they're on a trump time that is taking them away from their work in the office. So, I mean, I understand setting priorities and then, you know, I'll come back to you with, you know, what we're looking at as far as the budget and this is how we're going to fund that priority, you know, this is how, why it's really difficult in funding that priority, but as far as going like having all the department heads.
Well, it's more like, I think about when we did the budget process last year and like you always, and Michael, you always ended the conversations with, you know, if, what else would you want? What is your wish list with, if you, for all the department heads? So I feel like, is there an opportunity to do something without, you know, overcomplicating or, you know, that we can have these conversations so we know what we want to advocate for? You know, we can't, I can't sit here and say what I think the parks and rec budget should be, but I would love to hear ideas and, you know, think about it and then we as a group can sort of make recommendations based on that.
Could we request that from them to, to put something together and send to, to Mike and to us?
So if they do something in writing, then maybe it's not.
Almost maybe, and a testable template, I'm sorry.
What?
Like a plan.
Yeah.
Right?
Strategically.
Yeah, right.
And, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, they do have plans and I know they do present that to Mike. Maybe we just do a template for them to say, this, these are the high points of what they're going to be doing for their budget this year. And, you know, I love that question, if you could, what, what would you add if you could add anything, right? And by the way, when I, when I asked the question, they always got nervous, looked at Mike and were like, they gave one of these. I, I say that jokingly, they respectfully, they do.
Yeah, just to add to that, you know, when I was first on the planning board, that's something that we asked the, the town planner at the time, I think it was Tabitha, you know, what can we do to help your, your position? And that's how we got an assistant in there. And that's how Brian's there now, handling everything.
Yeah, I mean, I look at the, we're about to build a new building for the, not senior, what's the, what's?
The community center?
The community center, I'm trying to remember what her official human services type, the human services side of the business. And we haven't really added to the programming in years, right? And it's going to be a hard question, Mike, how do we get there? How do we get, right, we, I recognize it's tight, but how do we get there? And we can't say, well, we just, there's no way to get there. Other towns do it and I don't know where the money comes from, but I think it's going to be tough discussions for us to say, this is what our priority to tell the FinCom, this is what our priorities are this year, is to fully fund, I'm just throwing this out this into this, but parks and rec, is to fully fund it, meaning full-time person or whatever that is, okay? Then they can do with it, this is what, and I can go to them and say, this is what they want and this is how I got there from what their guidance was. And they can say, they can have the right to say no way, but then we, they have to kind of come up with an explanation to us why they can do it, if you will.
Yeah, I, I do think there are two separate things, thinking about budgeting and, and sort of longer term, but it does fit in with the strategic plan. So one of the things, and I, and we can, I think we can cross over between the two, but one of the things, you know, I think about is, look, you know, we have to, we have the business of the town to run, right? And that, that's just sort of laid out and that's sort of what we're charged with. Then, you know, in my mind, sort of thinking about, you know, and we can go around the room and sort of, what are each of your like goals and if, and if, and I know Michael's going to have a long list, but, but, but it's more about what's realistic. Like I could sit here and say, you know, these are the 80 things that I think the town should do to improve, that's not realistic. But if one of the things is, you know, a more vibrant, I mean, I loved when I did the tour of the fields, knowing what that's going to look like and what it's going to bring to the town. So I kept thinking when you talked about parks and rec too, like that's going to open up opportunities for us. So, you know, maybe that's where some of the revenue is coming from in terms of.
I mean, for my vision, just to stick parks and rec, just to stick with it, my vision would be to figure out a way to make it self-sufficient. But unfortunately, what that's going to require is probably a three-year investment for a full-time person with their only goal is, you have to figure out ways to make yourself, Walpole does it, there are other towns that do it. So it's not like there isn't, like the playbook is out there, we just have to find someone that can take the playbook and figure it out. But back to your point, I mean, for me, one of my goals, you know, like they say this, which is probably a little invest, a kind of a weird investment, is I really would love to come, to come up with a green strategy for our town. And what, what, what that means is, you know, a, you know, figuring out a paper, paper bag policy, figuring out, you know, for restaurants, no, no Styrofoam, figure out how to certain departments that have cars, I kind of come up with an energy plan, energy saving plan or vehicles that, I mean, I don't even talk to the chief and this is crazy idea, but do police, police cars, I mean, electric cars are fast. Does, do they make them? Are they going to be making them? Those kinds of things and may not be happening. This is a 10-year plan, for us to work on a plan. So over the next 10 years, that's implemented to get us say, all right, at the end of our plan, we're going to reduce this and we're going to be this clean. You know, this includes a paper policy, storage policy and so forth.
To answer that question, they do have one hybrid and another one on the way.
There we go, there we go. I mean, I even, I even talk about, you know, part of this would be a transfer station in town. We, we know trash is a problem, right? We have, we have 12 trash companies that service this town that are paying on an average $140 a quarter, when Mansfield only pays $75 a quarter to use one company.
Everything you said, I do like the transfer station idea.
I've, I've been thinking that ever since I moved back here from Lexington and they have a town one.
Yes.
Which is so much cheaper, they have a town recycling, they even have town clothes pickup.
Well, that's, but that's what they're saying in Foxborough though, it's more of a headache thing you realize, having a transfer station. So the recommendation would, again, to your point where they had duly came in serviced the whole time, you know? So I would love it. I, I just have, I, for the first time in 21 years, I now have trash service because my in-laws owned a place in the industrial park, so every week we just took it over to their dumpster. So I had to go out and I called five different places and I took, of course, the cheapest because why would you want to pay more for garbage removal? And it's awful because it's, you know, all different, it just.
It's, it's something that drives me crazy, but if you, we're about to build a multimillion dollar new building town hall and what's the equivalent of a transfer station is we'd be right next to it. You know, when we've got some land over near the water department, near John Scott, that might be more suitable for a traditional transfer station. I, I'm popcorn-ing obviously in the strategic plan, but I think this is part of a bigger plan of us tackling, and the funny thing is Mike's done a great job in implementing, implementing some of these ideas, but just collectively putting all in one plan and saying, this is our green plan for the town.
Madam Chair, I, I think there's a lot of good points being made and I think one of the other things is, I think, just in being on FinCom and seeing this before, is that the, the department by department approach doesn't lend itself to thinking about things that affect multiple areas. And that's sort of where we, I feel like this board should come in, is to say, well, we're not going to just solve this one problem for this one department when that's a problem that affects eight other departments. So when we talk about things like communication or a communication strategy, you know, we can look at something comprehensively or holistically across the entire town and come up with a plan that addresses it across the whole town rather than department by department. So, so I think that, that process of the department by department is valuable, but I don't think it's, I don't necessarily think that's where we would add the most value to it. You know, the FinCom can do that and go through all that. I love the idea of like a template, put together a sketch of a plan. It doesn't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to be 30-page plan for the Parks and Rec department, right? It can just be, what are your goals? What are your wishes? What, what do you wish you could have? But then we put that in and look at it through the comprehensive look through the whole town and come up with the priorities. So I just think that, that, that process, I think, would be true.
Totally agree. And again, going back to just sort of the time constraints and, and everything else that we do, you know, we can't just do one thing, you know, for one area. We kind of have to think about how it connects the dots.
Yeah.
And thinking of the green, so the company I ended up going with, I don't even know their name, we did the recyclable bin and we did the regma bin and they dumped them all in the same thing.
They all do that, they all do that, they all rattle, they rattle it.
They have a separate.
They have a separate, and they, they put it all in a single belt and it rattles it.
My wife's had the same thing.
My dad watched them one night, he was like, I know what they're doing. I'm like, no, they literally, it's fine, everything's fine. Yeah, no, you're good.
Your dad's in that business too.
No, but he, yeah, he was very determined. No, so yeah. But no, I think, I think all these ideas are really good and do we still have, what is it called, a 10-year plan? What, what was it? Five-year plan. So is that essentially what we, we as a select board want to do with getting all the information from other departments? Is that kind of where we're leaning towards or is it, do we want to do like a year-by-year plan, but like obviously like plan out a year, a fiscal year?
So the five-year plan, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, is more of just cash projections.
Okay.
Okay, it's, there's no goals in it.
Okay.
So it's, it's like, okay, this is where we think it's going to be. And if you want to look at Mike's plan, it's pretty, pretty accurate. I mean, he's, I think there's one year where he was just totally off, but for the most, even James for the most part have a rhythm to it. And I think Christine, to your point is, we talk about it and then we kind of implement it within that five-year.
But I think, I think I want to emphasize a point here and drawing what Kevin just said is that if we think of our, our board as sort of the umbrella of the town, right? And we're not just doing it for one department or one area, but we're looking at it collectively, there also needs to be, we as a board need to have a communication, well, without breaking open meeting law, but a communication amongst ourselves, but also we have to represent the town and, and I want us to set, and again, not standards or operationally, but we just have to have a conversation about it. So, you know, and that's when we, I do want to involve at some point the, you know, school committee and the finance committee and, you know, we're all, we're all serving a purpose and so how do we make sure that, you know, we're respecting each other's roles and responsibilities? That's all.
Yeah, and, and not to, not to diminish what you just said, for me personally, I always feel uncomfortable leading with school committee. I do, and not because their action, because we, it's by design, kept separate, okay? And it's, we all stay within our lanes. And so it's funny because it's like, I mean, we have these joint agendas, like we're flirting with this crossover that I think is not necessarily, and, and the FinCom's that way too. FinCom's designed to be separate from the select board and this, but I'm not saying they can't, I just, I tell you like, just my point of view where I feel a little uncomfortable.
I don't feel uncomfortable. I want, I want to have the meetings, I want to know what they're doing because I don't, I, I personally don't go watch their meetings. I, I don't, I have other things that I have to do. So I want to hear what they're telling, they're telling us and I want to have an open conversation in the public sphere without hearing it on social media, without having people come telling me this is what they did, this is what they're doing. I don't want that. I want the transparency, I want the, in lack of a better term, right way of doing it. That's, that's just, we can agree and disagree.
That's fair, and, and not, you're not disagreeing, I'm just telling my personal belief.
And, 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 you know, again, we're all adults, you know, we just, we all have to act like adults, that's all. And, you know, that's what we're asked to do. We're asked to, to, to help make sure that this town is managed properly. You know, we are, I think it's in the charter, we're going to be the CEOs of the town. We're not the CFOs and, and we're not the presidents or the whatever, but we're the CEOs. So I think we need to think like CEOs as we, as we move forward.
So, so a couple of my things, I mean, over the past several months, you know, a lot of folks have come up to me and asked about certain issues and the biggest ones that I see are the water issue and the town center. I know for the center, there was, there was a committee put together a few years back, they did a ton of work, presented a plan with, I think it was four, five different options. And to my knowledge, that kind of went nowhere after that. So I'd like to see us get that back on track and at least, if need be, presented to the town for, for an option. I mean, I think that's something that, that everybody would be looking forward to.
I believe there's an open spot.
Are you talking about the master plan? No, you're talking about specific.
There were four options to, to address the traffic flow within the center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that was a server project, if I'm not mistaken. And what that would have to do is obviously go to town meeting for funding and then the engineering of that, an option would be chosen and then engineering and all that stuff. And that's, then, then the state would pick it up.
Yeah, so I don't know if, if that was lost at the select board level years back or where it was kind of dropped, but I'd like to see that picked back up and at least options presented to the town at some point.
Well, along the, along those lines, one of my priorities, which are kind of, for obviously, it falls into economic development, but, you know, I just, I want to see some, what's the right word, continuity within our town, not structure, look, feel, it's just like just slapped all together.
Explain that a little more detail, I don't know what you mean, that's why, do you mean communication?
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm talking.
Brand?
I'm talking, well, brand, but I'm talking actual buildings and aesthetically, you know.
We don't, we don't have a walk, this is part of this, the, the master plan, it's just, we don't have a walkable town. We don't have any really communal places for the community to gather in town.
But even the ones that do have sidewalks.
That's where, that's exactly where the master plan comes in.
But even the sidewalks don't have, you know, I mean, our kids all walk up and down these, that one strip all day long and, you know, they go to Speedway, I mean, that's their hangout. I mean, I just feel like there's, you know, there needs to be a little bit. I mean, I just feel like there's, you know, there needs to be a little bit... Well, tasty. But another four things...
Something like that, when you said Speedway.
Oh, my gosh, chili hot dogs.
Madam Chair, I think, I think your vision would be kind of almost a challenge to the planning board to really focus on trying to beef up the village core. And that's the vision of the village core, which is tied into the, the master plan. And unfortunately, we're in a situation without a planner, a town planner right now. We're in the...
No, 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 I get that. This is sort of the bigger picture, but it sort of pains me when we, it just doesn't seem like there's revenue to what we do. And I know it's like, we just, if we can get a business in, we just grab it and we go for the revenue. But I just think there's, there's got to be a little bit more.
That's something Paul was very good at. He had a very good vision for downtown. So the master plan, I think, was done very well.
And we did pass the zoning changes for the village, for the village center and all that, which will take time, though, that's the thing, right?
That would be the key to start the center.
And that was the plan, yeah.
I mean, I think, just as a reminder, going back, right? This was not supposed to be our downtown. John Scott was. Right? That was supposed to be our main curricular track. That's why the street's so wide. That's why it was all commercial and industrial before, right? This was not it. So it's, we have to go, we're in the process of trying to get back to, I drove the drawing board on. So it's...
So that's something I'd like to see.
And then you have your second one.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's, the biggest problem in town is the water.
Still the water.
You know, I can, I've watched a few of the Water Commission meetings, and, you know, I'm not happy with what I'm hearing. As a select board, I'd like to see what, if anything, we can do to, to help them with that situation. Or just put it, I mean, I don't have any solutions. I just think that it's something that we should be actively working on.
Well, when you talk about brand, I mean, you can't have a town like that in the United States.
Yeah, I mean, I could go into detail about, about the last meeting and, and certain things, but I'm not going to. It's a major problem to the point where, you know, families are moving out of town because of it in certain areas. In other areas, there's no issue, so.
And Madam Chair, I think this is, this is not going to solve the big problem that Steve's talking about, but we haven't had a joint game with the water board in a bit, or an update of kind of the water board. I think it's time to bring that in.
I was getting to that.
I'm sorry, just for the simple, simple reason on, as Steve's point, I watched the, I watched the last meeting. There's, there's wrong in...
There's inconsistencies and irregularities in answers. And I would like some, some questions answered.
And to, I think, their detriment, which I, which I talked to, I was like, "Come now, this is what I'm doing."
No, I was looking, because it involved my street, and I'm, I'm part of the issue. Not necessarily the issue that's ongoing, but I have bad water in my house. I mean, we have a filter and I still have brown water. So, you know, some of the, some of the things that were said at the last meeting were not, were just not accurate.
Yeah.
And I'd like, I'd like to hold them to account. But in a long, as far as long-term and strategic planning, I would like to find out if there's anything as a select board we can do to assist in that.
And also, because of Norton, the way it is, without sewer, you don't have any economic development. So that'd be something to bring up with the Water and Sewer Commission too, is why you're strategic planning and where you're going to develop. My big thing would be down one forty, there's no sewer. And you have those huge vacant lots sitting there that can't be built on because they don't have town sewer. So what, what is the, they do have a plan, you know, and they could just come and express it to you.
Just so you know, I have the master plan for the water department, and it's probably fifty pages up front, but then there's a lot of drawings of what the plans are for the town. I'll be glad to share it with anyone on there. It's an interesting, if you want to go to sleep, it's interesting reading. But it's, it's interesting on the data.
And I, and I agree with, with Mike, you know, adding sewers to those areas is going to be great for the town. But you still have hundreds, thousands of residents that have dark brown water consistently, you know. So that's, I think that should take priority over everyone.
I'd love to just see like, an assessment from the water department of who's got brown water, right? Like, I, it's like, we see, we hear all these reports, and you can't start a plan unless we know who's got it. So I'd love to just see a report, who's got it? Who's got brown water?
Because ours is spotty, but like, I don't know, I've never reported it to anyone, so I have to say no.
It's all, Pete's got a goal, you know?
We've got a problem that's gone on so long.
I've never, my whole life here...
Three months, we would get it, and it would be like, you'd fill up your bathtub.
So we've, we've never, we've never addressed the problem. We've had it so long that people stop complaining, right? And that's, that's problematic in its own right, right? Because when we ask them and we bring them in here, they say, "Yeah, we get two calls a week." And what we do is usually we go down there, we flush out the lines. But that is not capturing the, right?
It's not addressing the problem. It's not, it's not it.
We need to be addressed and make, give an understanding on why well one is the way it is. It's not going through the treatment facility. It's a shallow well, those kinds of things. Five and six are at the life, at the end of life, and they're bringing the new one on. Like, we need some kind of documents in the town to explain what they're doing, because they are working very hard to fix the problem. I, I, I do not want to discount what they're doing.
Oh, absolutely.
I just don't think we're communicating it to the town, what they're doing.
It's one of those things, oh, I'm sorry. It's one of those things where it seems like it's getting better, but we don't know that it's getting better, because we don't have any kind of real assessment of where we were and where we are and where we're going.
So I can, I can give you a specific assessment directly, because I'm impacted by it. So when I bought my house, it was before they replaced the water pipe on Pine Street. And they replaced it all the way up past my house, out of the last house that got the new water pipe. And that was supposed to fix the problem. Before that, the water would come in as dark as the gavel over there. After they replaced the pipe, that was, that was, we were told, "Can fix it. It's going to be perfect." Didn't at all. It still came in brown. We put a filtration system on the entire house, very expensive, and it still comes through, through the filter. So there's obviously an issue. And the, you know, I don't want to get into more specifics, but there were, there was a question brought up by people on, on my street about, you know, "Why is this still happening?" And the reason that was given was that it could be the pipes in the house. You know, we're not all getting groundwater on the same day because of our pipes in our house and then clear water the next day. You know, and that, those are the things I'd like to ask and get clarification on.
All right, now that's, that's fair. We'll do another one.
But as far as strategic planning, again, you know, that's something that, this town needs to have something in place that's kind of fixed this for good.
Let's start with an assessment. Let's start with where we are, like, to your point, where we're going.
Yeah. Madam Chair, can I just run down a couple of, kind of a wish list, if you will? Just, you got to mention like three things. You know, for me...
You lost me when you said paper bags.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. You know, Rec, obviously, talked about Rec restructuring, an idea of common expansion. People don't realize how common is not, it's a memorial common. And I think there's a lot of activities that sometimes flirt with the disruption of the memorial.
That could, that could tie into the...
Yeah, absolutely. Beach or boat launch, and I know Mike's been working hard on this, Christine's been kind of championing a lot of this. And just write kind of a communication plan, just better communication plan. You know, I had a chance to sit down with Charlene, I talked to her about the minutes and the schedules and that stuff. She's like, "I've asked for them. People don't buy them." She's like, "I can't force them to send me stuff," right? So maybe there's a way for us as a board to kind of work with other boards to say, "Listen, this is what we need you to do, minutes, agendas."
Well, we need internal communication, but we also need an external communication plan.
That means the open meeting law.
What?
That's, that's in line with the open meeting law. So, all right, that's, that's...
Christine? Sort of all in...
On the spot?
Yeah.
Do you want to hear my one fun idea?
Yes, I want to go on a fun idea, I think.
All right, and this is like, grand wish idea is develop the island in the center for that whole stretch down 140, restaurants, little boardwalk. You could have boats go over to the island. You could have a little, you know, something there. I'm telling you, you get, you talk about economic development...
I love it. I love the idea.
We need booming.
Yeah, that is...
And then we do it so Mansfield gets the traffic and we get the revenue.
That's what we need to do. That's how we fix the traffic issue.
With Keith Silver's family's property right there, that's what we were envisioning there when we met with one of the developers, that, you know, they could put restaurants there.
Just a little...
There was some talk about that.
Even just a small little boardwalk. I'm trying to think of...
A boardwalk, right, one, all along the reservoir there, and that parking, so people could park and then go out and walk.
You're not the first to have heard that from me.
I love it. Sorry, Christine's daydreaming about walking on the boardwalk.
We do! I don't know where this property is, but I don't want, so I've lived, I've lived off reservoir too long. There's certain things, and Mike has heard my frustration. There's certain things that I just, when you said that I champion, I don't champion a lot of the ideas that are happening right now with the water access. So, like, I spoke with a resident who is, is championing, championing the, their idea, and he's, he very much, I would like to say he's like the Lorax for the Jennifer Beach. And he speaks for the residents there. And we sat down and we had this, he came up with these amazing ideas that he put in from residents. I added some ideas where he was like, "That's great." And we worked on a whole plan, and it kind of got pushed over, which it is what it is. But I do not want to see anything get developed at South Lakeview. I, that's, I will, I will do an anti-strategic planning and say, "I don't want anything developed there for so many reasons." It, you know, I could go on, but that's not, that's not what we're talking about. One of, trash, trash has been one of the things, not to steal an idea, but it, you know, I just let things simmer until they come up. You know, there, there's so much you want to see with the town. I think you said a wish list. I can't even think of more of a wish list. I'd love to see more community, because I do feel that there are certain groups in the town that just want to focus on their groups, whether it be political, whether it be sports-related, whether it be age group-related, whatever it may be. And I'd love to see like, community, and I think we lost that unfortunately at Founder's Day. So just like, bringing back the sense of Norton pride for those people who have been there their whole lives, for those who are newer to town.
I do think that Fields Projects is going to help that situation, because there is no gathering place.
Yeah.
But that place will become that, those kind of pickleball and tennis courts.
So we'll get there. That's, you know, it's not like an actual, I don't have any set goals that are saying, "This is going to solve the problem," because I don't think like that. I think of what, what do we need as a town? And we need our spirit back, and we need our community back. So that's kind of where.
Actually, me, I bring my spirit every day and my community back.
Yeah.
I'd love to prioritize Founder's Day as a budget item and not something we have to rely on donations for every year. I think that's, frankly, I think that's ridiculous.
There's pride in that. There's pride in that.
I think it's an event that the entire town loves. There's no reason why that should not be budgeted for.
Yeah, and if donations cover the budget, I mean, then it is what it is.
Right, but it's a go from year to year to be like, well, maybe we're having it, maybe we're not. That should be a town-sponsored event.
Yeah, I think, you know, I mentioned it, I don't even know if you're at the meeting, but I had mentioned to Christine, you know, I've had a business in town for twelve years, and not once have myself or any of the businesses I deal with been even approached to donate.
I got an application for you.
Yeah, I'm ready. And talk to, you know, the Norton Business Association...
Yeah, he said he's got an application, it's ready to go, so I'll get either one.
If he fills out that application, he can have a float in the Halloween Day...
He can.
Paul the mayor!
My board could ride on it.
And the mayor...
I like the mayor.
I'm heading yourself. I'm already talking about floats.
Yeah, but the applications are out, we'll plug, the applications are out for Halloween floats, suggested donation of thirty dollars.
And the mayor will be in the...
And the mayor will be in the party.
Yeah!
And this year, for Founder's Day, the question is where?
And that's one of, it's one of the things that Steve and I, so we were talking about it, and it's one of the questions I asked when we took the tour. Obviously, the fields are non-option. Where was non-optioning? So one of the things that I would, I spoke to Mike about and talked to the chief about briefly was, basically, you block off 123, right to left, and you block it off to the high school, which basically doesn't affect residents. There's just one little neighborhood behind us. There's, and is there in that area, can we find the 250-feet circumference to do fireworks? But that would be, it would almost turn it into like a, if you have ever been in Mansfield's during their Mansfield night or family fun night, almost that atmosphere of just from there to there, along the sides, people, and then we could probably kind of find space to kind of have common areas or whatever. Obviously, I'm not in the planning stages, I'm just kind of like popcoining, but that was one of the suggestions.
That behind the middle school is not there?
I don't, the parking is an issue.
Yeah, the parking would be an issue, right.
And cut off, and you can't shut that off, because that's no way to get around. And, you know, Joe mentioned that as well, is that, that being this, I said, "Joe, is the parking going to be..."
Because there would be parking there, but also if you did it behind the middle school, or the fireworks behind the middle school and had all the vendors and everything and the activities, there's, it would take away from parking. And as it is, just, you know, during a regular voting season, in November.
Take away parking, take away parking, the venue would be incredible. I mean, you'd have to park your cars.
Take away parking issue.
But I don't...
Unless we, you know, we have parking, we can kick it around, but I mean, if there was parking at the high school and then shuttles over or something.
Christine, you know the space of E3. I don't know that space.
The what?
E3, is that a space? Like, I don't even know if it's...
I don't foresee fireworks being shot off anywhere near there. Or visual to see the fireworks, because there are so many trees. I don't foresee that happening. The only spot I was thinking was a GCS. You know, I love that field behind there. I know that's somebody's property, but I just love it so much. You know, not that we could use that, but, you know, talk, because they have the, all they have is a softball field, and then they have that open space of areas that could be used. There, there, that's plenty of parking. And, you know, they can actually, like, they can say, compared to the high school, you can safely park on the side of the road of the entrance without, well, if you're a smart parker. You can not cause, you know, any egress issues compared to the high school, where if you can't park on the side, you only have what spots there are. I just don't know how feasible that is, because there's plenty of spots where you can drive behind the GCS, put like, you know, they have food trucks or vendors, do it all there. That, that's another option. I just don't know how you go about that, if it's school committee, school department, superintendent, who, who we have to talk to about that. But that's, that's an option for a lot of people. I mean, losing the field is, at least we're losing the field that we would use to a great cause by getting gorgeous fields that are going to come in.
So why don't they, if other people do it, why is it because it's turf?
I think he's, he's very uncomfortable. He can't do fireworks on the turf. And you could probably set it back. I asked him, I said, "Could you do it in the grassy area that's, that's protected?" He said that, and then when Sean said that, that's not the, you don't have the safety circumference.
I think, no matter where we do it, we're going to depend on the shuttle for parking. But, I mean, if that's the only...
But I think we're all in agreement that Townsgiving Day would be an important thing to make sure that that's...
That's the big takeaway.
Yeah, I agree, that is, that is definitely needed.
So let me ask you this, I mean, back to Madam Chair for you. Kevin, I know you talked about funding, but, you know, I don't see us funding a full thing with $20,000. I just don't see us doing that. And I guess this next question is for Mr. Town Manager. Is there, is there a way to fund a portion of the firework, right? Fireworks are always the biggest fundraiser, because you have to put, put in the down payment enough in advance. Is there a way to possibly put that into a budget that, for that? Or is that something that you might need to look at?
You would just do like a Celebration Day article, and you put so much money in there. A lot of time. A lot of time to do that. They have the Celebration Day article, and they'll put some seed money in there.
Good. And talk to me about timing of that. If we were, right, so we would like to do the, do it next year.
June, right? Is that one of those?
Probably would be them.
Right, because...
You, what you get it passed at Town Hall.
Oh, okay.
The rec director about Founder's Day, I said, you know, it would be like next summer, but you got to stop thinking about it right now, because you got to book the fireworks in advance.
And there is remaining funds from the last, if I'm not mistaken, there's remaining funds from the last Founder's Day that wasn't used, that is only earmarked for that event, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm not sure how much is in there, but...
Okay, but that's, that's...
I mean, that's all you really need is the seed money.
I do like the, I like the article idea.
Yeah, we hit up Steve Wornspie's company for the rest.
I'm writing a message right now. I'll send you that association.
Got my denied stamp right on it.
Madam Chair, have we, I think we've kind of, we've got some good ideas out there.
We kind of jumped on Christine, if there's anything else. Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, any more of my ideas? No.
Oh, okay.
No, thank you, though.
So I think this is not, this is not just a one-time conversation. I think this is, you know, maybe, maybe it's something we put a bullet on that we just, if there's any updates, or sort of keep the conversation moving. if there's any updates, or sort of keep the conversation moving, I think would be really important. But I would, and I, again, I wanna emphasize, I do think, all these, all these are great ideas, but if we don't find the proper channels to communicate and to work with our community partners in this, it does, it's all gonna fall by the wayside. So we need to get by, you know, we need to plan it, and then we need to execute it, but we, we also need to communicate that. So that's something that I'll definitely like to work with Mike on, on the communication piece.
And if it's okay with you, I would love to bring the two ideas specifically, that I would love to see them forward, and maybe, just so we can maybe create a working room amongst us, of the, the green initiative, the green plan long-term, and then the trash plan, or.
The fuses.
They're very tied together, but they're two different projects, right? So maybe the full green plan, and then, you know, we, we can kind of piecemeal that together and, and work it forward, so. Thank you.
No motion to adjourn?
Well, no, we still have a couple of things on, I have to, sorry, can't motion to adjourn yet.
Yes, this one has.
Wait, I, I love the spirits.
Yes, this one has.
He's like, I wanna talk about that one.
I was gonna slip that by.
Other topics not anticipated.
Gated, that's boring.
Forty-eight hours in a day.
Yes, yeah.
You talked earlier about the event that they're having at the VFW on the tenth. Unfortunately, they forgot to ask us, they need to close Summer Street. And I told them I'd bring it up, I do have emails from the two chiefs, who, as long as there's signage and barricades are visible, and that there's access for emergency vehicles down the road, they're not opposed to the closing of Summer Street. So they're looking to close Summer Street on the tenth from eleven thirty AM until five PM.
After Seminary Way, so Seminary Way is not ten disrupted, and emergency services is running traffic control.
Right.
And so what they're gonna be doing is they're gonna be having shuttle buses from the old school down to the VFW.
So, can you have a motion to approve the request to close the street?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Town managers, all I wanted to tell you on the rail trail is that it was actually advertised on September third, so.
All right, moving. Do you know, do you have a shovel date on that?
They should be next spring, it'll be done.
Just one thing for the board, obviously, the Kana opening, they are gonna have a grand opening, and it looks like it's gonna be September seventeenth now, okay? But there will be an invite going out to the groups, but Andre, they've had a very successful first week, and one or just me, he wanted me to make sure that you guys were aware of that, and I'll make sure that the invite gets sent over to you guys, for the ribbon, got it?
I do actually have a question, I think we have to go back for the strategic planning slash, I know we can talk about this outside, because it's just in regards to planning. So are we going back to every other Wednesday?
Yes.
Mike, are there any other days that we're gonna need, when it, as it's getting closer to the town meeting? Do we, are there any other days that you anticipate that we need to schedule out of the abnormal? Or out of the normal?
Between now and December, maybe?
Before, well, before now in town, yeah. Like, you know, last, you know, we do some FinCom, I don't know if you already had, if you already had that.
I don't know, I don't know, to be honest with you, yet.
Okay, so maybe by the September twenty-first, we could have any other dates aside, but besides that, at least.
So we can all put them on our calendar.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, because usually we have it, you know, I don't wanna wait, you know, till this meeting to find out if there's next meeting, and then I have to wait till next meeting to find out if there's a next meeting. So can we just make an assumption that it's every other Wednesday from now until December?
And unless it falls on some weird holiday, which I'm trying to look to see.
Or like the week before.
Like, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, if it happens to fall on that day, we're not gonna.